Good evening, everyone. It is January 6, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. I hope everyone did well with the snow yesterday and this morning. Carly is currently coming by with all the printouts. But in the meantime, Mr. Sumner, if you'd please do the call to order.
Councilman Nichols.
Present.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Present.
Councilman Patterson.
Present.
Councilman Smock.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Present.
As a reminder, with one council member online, all votes tonight will be roll-call votes, Mr. Sumner. Hope you brought a bottle of water. All right, if you'd all please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the five United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. She didn't bring her agendas yet? That's all right. We will get going with what we have in front of us for the moment. So the first item up for business in our January meetings is always considering council elections of officers. As a reminder, the officers that are up are President and Vice President. Therefore, do we have any nominations for President of the Council?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Dan Patterson for President.
I would also like to nominate Eric Nichols as President.
We'll do one item at a time. There was one nomination for myself, Dan Patterson, for President. Is there a second?
I will second that.
There is a second. The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you please call the roll-call vote.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Nay.
Councilman Patterson.
Yes.
Councilman Smock.
Yes.
Councilman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries three, two. That would alleviate the vote for the second. However, we now will move on to Vice President. Are there any nominations for Vice President?
I would like to nominate Eric Nichols then for Vice President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of Eric Nichols as Vice President, Mr. Sumner, if you please do a roll-call vote.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Second. Or aye.
It's okay, it works. Motion carries five, zero. On to item two, the agenda presentations. I have none before me. I also don't have an agenda at the moment, so... Michael, are you up there? Are there any presentations online that I should be aware of? No? Thank you very much. Item number three, the Clerk Treasurer Report. Cheryl, I'm gonna kind of share with you, if you don't mind for the moment. Council, you all have the Clerk Treasurer Report before you. Are there any questions or consideration about the Clerk Treasurer Report?
I just had one question, and I meant to ask Matt beforehand. For the bills from last year, do they come out of this year's budget, or did we encumber money from last year to pay some of those bills, like accounting, attorneys, some of our normal, regular, monthly bills?
It would really depend on when it was paid.
Okay.
So, that's... It varies.
But typically, we try to stack bills so that, for instance, health insurance.
We have a bill that's due at the beginning of the month, basically in January. That's January's bill, so we wait until January to pay that, so it comes out January's budget.
Okay.
The 2025 budget, if that makes sense.
Yes, that does. Thank you.
Are there any further questions about the Clerk Treasurer Report? Hearing none, we'll move to item four, to the Department Reports, DPW Building Planning, Parks and Rec, Public Relations, WFD, WMPD. You should all have that before you. Are there any questions in relation to the Department Reports? Seeing none, we go to a public request to speak on topics not related to an agenda item. I have none brought before me physically. Michael, any online? None online? All right, we're gonna move on. That brings us to item six, approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from the previous month, 2025 Town Council Meeting Minutes, and claims 2024 expenses, 2024 revenues, and 2024 utility claims.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for the approval of the consent agenda. Roll-call vote, Mr. Sumner.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Leads us to item seven, unfinished business. Third reading, item A, third reading, considered adoption of ordinance 2024-22, the 2024 Braun Micro Super voluntary annexation.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Let me share my screen here so you can see the area that we're talking about, but this is the third read of the Braun Micro Super voluntary annexation. And this area is approximately 121 acres, north of County Road 200 South, west of County Road 600 East. There in kind of the middle of the area, of the hatch area, is County Road 7... Excuse me, 575 East. This is, as I said, the third reading. The public hearing was on your December 2024 meeting, as well as the fiscal plan approval was introduced at the November 2024 meeting. If this reading is approved, there will be a 30-day remonstrance period before this annexation could be recorded with the county and the various other entities that the annexations get recorded as. Coming in, this property will just be zoned ag. Later in the agenda, you will hear a first read for a rezon of this property, as well as the previous Braun Micro annexation that is just to the east of this area, over to 650 East. I believe the Braun folks are planning on being there this evening. Obviously, I can't see the crowd.
They are here.
Whether or not they're in there or not, if you have questions for them, or if you have any questions for me.
Thank you very much, Todd. And yes, the representatives from Braun are indeed here. And thank you for making the trip in, especially on a day that wasn't necessarily easy to drive. Third read, council. Any questions for the Braun group regarding this item, or for Todd? Hearing no questions, I would... I would hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-22, the Braun Micro Super voluntary annexation.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you will, please.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Congratulations. Item B, second read, considered adoption of ordinance 2024-23, PC 24-042-ZA Speedway.
That is me again here, just getting it right. Then pull it up. I will share my screen again to show this property. Before here is the... Read for the second read for the Speedway rezon. This property sits north of Albertus White, west of 450 South... Oh, excuse me, 450 East. Approximately 11.83 acres. There at the north-west corner of the intersection of Albertus White and 450 East. This rezon did go through the Plan Commission at the November 12 meeting, where it received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Included with their recommendation, there were two commitments that were included with this request. Let me see if that is... Here it is, here we go. Those two commitments were to not allow overnight truck parking on the facility or any of the property, as well as to not market or use any of the other portion of the property for fueling center or truck fueling. Speedway gas station plans to develop 5.24 of the 11.83 acres for both a pedestrian or auto car fueling center and convenience store, as well as, I think it is, two or three truck islands as well on this property. As I said, Plan Commission, yes, sent a favorable recommendation on this rezon request.
Thank you, Todd.
Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-23 for the Speedway rezon.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item C, public hearing for second read, consider adoption of ordinance 2024-24, establishing encroachment specifications for the town of Whiteman Rite of Ways.
There's also a public hearing.
So, sorry, I missed the public hearing one. So, as public hearing is C, and I jumped right on past it. All right. Public hearing for second reading, considering adoption of ordinance 2024. The time is 6:13, and I will open the public hearing. Michael, is there anyone online that wishes to speak about the subject? I'm gonna thumbs down anybody in the room that wishes to speak about the subject.
Mr. President, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Sumner.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
All right, and we are closed with the public hearing at 6:14, excuse me. And we can now consider adoption of ordinance 2024-24.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to consider adoption of ordinance 2024-24, establishing encroachment specifications for the town of Whiteman Rite of Ways.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption. Mr. Sumner.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item D, second reading, consider adoption of ordinance 2024-26, establishing medical hardship for utility customers.
Mr. President, if I may. Last month, council had requested some additional changes to the ordinance in front of them. And I also met with staff regarding the points brought up at the meeting in December. I believe that this ordinance reflects those changes. And if you have any questions on those changes, please let me know.
Who'd you work with specifically on staff to make sure that they reflect the changes?
Sure, I had a phone call, it was about an hour-long conversation with Counselor Thomas. It was a Zoom call with Counselor Thomas, Aaron Miller, and Lester Downs. They have seen, all three individuals were circulated the ordinance, and they agreed with the changes, and said that it matched the nature of the discussion that we had that day.
Thank you kindly.
Essentially, the weather component would require, at the town's discretion, if there was a disconnect, like for today, for example, it was definitely below 25 degrees. If somebody's water disconnection was set for today, at the town's discretion, if they believe that the meter would be compromised by disconnecting it, they would be able to delay that. I need to work with the Water Department and Water Billing to make sure that the notice requirements to the citizens reflect this change after it passes. If it passes.
Thank you very much. And Councilman Thomas, you're satisfied that it hit what you were looking for?
I am, and just specifically for the record, what I was looking for, the previous ordinance did not have... If a customer had their... their service disconnected, they were not allowed to... And they entered a payment plan, and for whatever reason, they did not follow through on the payment plan. Whenever they did come back and make the town whole, they were now further ineligible for the life, for life, to not be able to enter another payment plan again. And I am satisfied with the period of 12 months after making a town whole, to be able to now be eligible for another payment plan, so...
And just to note, in the packet that you guys were given tonight, there should be a red line version that shows all the changes made in front of you, if you want to review those.
Are there any further questions regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024-26, establishing medical hardship for utility customers.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item E, second reading, consider adoption of ordinance 2024-25, establishing Regions Bank as credit card processing company for utility payments. I believe this is yours, Mr. Sumner?
That's correct. This is basically just allowing us to move away from invoice cloud in order to have all of the credit card processing for... or electronic payments, and as well as like the lockbox, all under one house, moving forward with utility payments, utility billing payments. This will actually end up also saving us money, because their rates are cheaper than invoice cloud, so...
Are there any questions for Mr. Sumner regarding this item? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2024-25, establishing Regions Bank as our credit card processing company for utility payments.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. That ends unfinished business. Brings us to item eight, new business. A, first reading of ordinance 2025-01 for PC 24-043, TA Ellis Acres PUD text amendment.
Do you need to get on council? This is an amendment to the Ellis Acres PUD. I will share my screen again. The requested change to this ordinance affects the units outlined in the red cloud there on the screen. It is the units that front 750 South and Indianapolis Road. These are the units that are rear-loaded, so the fronts will actually face out to 750 and Indy Road. The garages are in the rear along the internal roadway. This amendment is proposed to change the text for the architectural standards for these units. The previous ordinance required multiple materials on those front facades. Lennar, not being the original developer or the original drafter of this PUD, was attempting to kind of work within the confines of that ordinance. However, they'd actually would like to build an upgraded product which that text, by virtue of requiring the multiple materials on that front facade, would not allow. Their proposed change actually would be for 100% masonry on that front facade of those units. It also required an offset for all of the units between the separate... Within the same building, as well as opposite buildings. This text amendment does allow change to that text, which again, there will still be offsets within the overall building, but not in some of the four-unit buildings themselves. Here are some of the elevations that they're proposing for these units along the perimeter there. That's the elevation, and then these are the... This demonstrates the offset that they're proposing as a part of this ordinance. I do believe representatives from Lennar are gonna be present this evening. For any questions, I will answer questions that may come up as well. Plan Commission did hear this at their December meeting, where they did send a... They do send a favorable recommendation on this request.
Thank you, Todd. And we do have a representative for Lennar here. If you'd like to go ahead and introduce yourself for the record, please.
Yes, hello. Thank you, council members, for being here tonight and for hearing our case. My name is Sean Blackburn. I'm an entitlements manager at Lennar Homes of Indiana. 111-555-North Meridian Street, Carmel, Indiana 46032. Just here to answer any questions you have, and let me know.
Sean, or Todd, I don't know who this is for, how many units total are we talking about on that frontage?
On the frontage there, for the three-story townhomes, would be 34 units.
And are these for rent townhomes, or are they purchased townhomes?
For purchase.
Michael, are there any questions, anyone online? Thank you, sir.
So, I would just add then, just so it's clear, I had a conversation with a friend who's the HOA lead of Section 10 in Eagles Nest. It's in Councilman Thomas's division, but I have the friendship and talked to them. They've had conversations and showed up to the meeting, public meeting that Lennar put on, and they have no objections to this either, as the closest houses to the different... The different design, or different materials on those.
Thank you, Councilman Nichols.
And then also, just from the Plan and Commission meeting, this new design represents an upgraded design, correct?
Correct. We're not the original developers of the site, so we didn't write this PUD, but given the investment that Lennar is looking to make in this area of Whiteman, we wanted to put our newest and best, most expensive product that we have in this location that was designed after, you know, we took the deal on. And so that's why we're back here for the text amendment, is really just to allow for the full front brick facade and the configuration of those units.
Are there any further questions for the gentleman? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item B, first reading of ordinance 2025-02 for PC 24-044-ZA Beckman Park PUD.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I did not jump in ahead of time. If you would like to pass that ordinance on first read, either of these ordinances, A, under eight, A or B, can be done on first read, because the public hearing was done at the Plan Commission?
Is there any necessity for suspending the rules for a second read at this time, as far as you're concerned, sir? Please.
There's no major hardship that we need this. However, we are doing site work, and we're in the ground. Our plan was just to start with the two-unit buildings and wait on... Or the two-story buildings on the south of the site, and then go into the three-story buildings. But if it's approved now, we can start going vertical on that sooner and bring both products online sooner, so...
Generally speaking, portions of this body aren't big fans of suspending the rules unless there's an urgent need or an issue of time, but we are often willing to work with developers if that needs to arise. Council, is there anyone that feels strongly in the need to suspend the rules at this time?
Well, I have Ashley. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Ashley's point was, since the public hearing was already held at Plan Commission, that we don't have to do a two-reading of this ordinance.
That's correct.
It just has to do the one.
Yeah, there's actually no...
There is no second read.
Reason for you to suspend the rules. You don't need... A second read isn't required. If you would want him to change the proposal or want to have additional discussions, it can be set over to the second read.
Oh, well, my apologies. I didn't realize the public hearing had happened, and the Plan and Commission was already done, and everything was said.
Yes, I'm sorry if I was not clear.
Not a problem. All right. Knowing that the public has already weighed in on this item, I would have no issue with going forward if there was a motion to do so.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-01 for the Ellis Acres PUD text amendment.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for approval. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
And you said the same situation for item B.
Correct.
Thank you very much. So let's do that again. First reading, possibly only. Of ordinance 2025-02 for Plan Commission 24-044-ZA Beckman Park PUD. All right.
Once again, council, good evening. This is, as I mentioned, as a part of the Braun Micro annexation. This is the rezon request proposed for not only the ground that is subject of the annexation, as well as the previous annexation. So, I'm gonna pull up a... My screen to show the area. It's actually part of the PUD ordinance itself, but this encompasses all of the ground from 650 East, 600 there in the center, 575 to the west, and then does go just past, just west of 575 as well. This request is a total of 262 acres. This is a PUD that is proposed to include a combination of single-family, traditional single-family, some potential alley-loaded, single-family product, as well as mixed-use commercial perks space, as well within this... commercial perks space as well within this district. The folks, Brown folks are looking to maximize the future alignment of the 575 corridor that would swing to the east and essentially align kind of the center of this project where you can see the urban center district kind of laid out there. This project did go through the Plan Commission as well as a neighborhood meeting as a part of the rezon process through the Plan Commission. Plan Commission did send a favorable recommendation on this project as well at their December ninth meeting. I know the Brown folks and representatives are there this evening. If you would like to hear more from them, I know that they are able and willing to answer any questions you might have as a part of that. Again, this is going from Ag, General Agricultural, to Plan Unit Development, the Beckman Park PUD. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good evening. How are you doing tonight?
Good evening. Doing well.
Good, 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 good. Looking at the overlay on this, the forested protected wetland there, dead center, how large would you say that area is?
So that entire park area will be about 27 acres.
About 27?
And it's a combination of what is wooded and then additional open space around there as well. And some of that, you know, the road will be going through there, so some of that will have to be contributed to right-of-way for 600.
Sure.
Yeah, and then ultimately, overall, there'll be about 70 acres total of open space throughout the entire development. So in the PUD, we've committed to a minimum of 25% of the overall acreage.
I do appreciate the thoughtfulness you put in on this design to have it varied and to give over some space that would be undeveloped, you know, left green.
Thank you.
I don't have any, excuse me, I don't have any questions, but I know that we've worked, they've worked really hard over this, at least the last year that I've been involved with this project. From where we started to where we're at is definitely a lot better. We have some bigger lots, which is one of my biggest things, as we got further away from the center of town, to have some of those bigger lots, which are included in this. And I like it being that it's a PUD and that we know upfront what's going into this area than approving something that could change down the road. So I've talked to some of the residents, and I've not had anybody say anything negative against it.
Michael, are there any, thank you very much. He was quick, he knew what I was going to ask. Are there any further questions from council? I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-02 for the PC 24-044ZA Beckman Park PUD.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilman Nichols?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Item C, consider expenditure exceeding $25,000, not to exceed $93,218, and $0.80 in prepayment amount of $46,609, and $0.40 superior fence and rail.
Good afternoon, or good evening, council. This is for the new municipal building to be fenced in alongside of the wastewater treatment plant. We got our three quotes. Legal has reviewed our superior contract, and we're just looking to move forward. We're getting it fenced in and protecting the assets that we have out of that facility. Sure, sure.
I've got a question on page one of the superior quote. It says seven-foot-tall galvanized chain link fence on the right portion of that schematic, where every place else says six feet for the fence. What am I missing there?
It's a total of seven. We're hooking in actually to the wastewater treatment plant's current fencing, which has kind of slipped up a little bit higher than where we are sitting with that property. So the fence will kind of angle down and go into six foot.
Gotcha.
Are there any other questions regarding this matter?
I do have one question for Dom. Hey Dom, were you able to get the standard contract signed by the fence company?
Yes, so my plan is, I got a new employee, I've been walking through that entire process to show him how to do it. Before we send it off to get it signed, we'll put it into our document and also share with you the signed version once we get it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a?
The reason I asked Dominic that question is there are some terms in the contract in front of you that wouldn't be in line with the town standard contract, so once that contract does come through.
Listen, it's not that big. I didn't stop. What was the question?
Hey, Michael, is there someone trying to engage?
Almost sounds like Siri.
Sorry, Dom, there was like two voices coming out of us at once, and it was hard to tell what was going on up there.
Yeah, so upon that being signed, we would be comfortable with the town proceeding with There does need to have two separate approvals tonight on this contract because one of the contract clauses is a 50% down.
Yep, absolutely.
Wonderful.
And I will go ahead and start with the 50%, because if that doesn't pass, it makes the whole thing kind of moot at the moment.
Yes.
So first, do I have a motion to allow for the prepayment amount of $46,609, and $0.40 for this contract?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sumner.
Councilman Nichols?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Yes.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye. The 50% prepayment is approved, but the motion are with a vote of five zero, which now I would consider a motion for the expenditure of $93,218, and $0.80.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilman Nichols?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item D, acknowledgement and acceptance by the town council of a uniform conflict of interest disclosure form for Councillor Smock.
So council, this is on the agenda at our advice to Councillor Smock. It has come to our attention that Councillor Smock is employed at Lowe's, and the town also does business at Lowe's, so out of an abundance of caution and just for full transparency, we suggested that because of the town's business with Lowe's, there may be a situation that a uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement would apply to some of the purchases between Lowe's and the town. And out of abundance of caution, we suggested that this be submitted to the town for acknowledgement
Yeah, so I'll obviously recuse myself from the, any type of vote on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smock. All right.
Now, does it necessarily need to be a vote?
It's not a vote, but it's more of an acceptance of the publication.
Correct.
However, I just still wanted Mr. Smock to not be engaged in the conversation.
Understood.
Has these purchases been made, Ms. Elber?
I'm sorry?
Have their purchases already been made, or are they anticipated to be made?
I think they're anticipated to be made. I mean, there are emergencies, purchases that I'm aware of that may be being made between town employees and Lowe's, but those would be de minimis in value. However, there is an anticipated purchase, I believe, is going to go forward between Lowe's and the town. So again, out of abundance of caution, we thought we would get this in front of you now.
Certainly, and I would charge you that should that purchase be made, that you follow up with that and make sure it's filed in the appropriate way with Mr. Sumner or whatever bodies need it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Acknowledged and accepted. Any other questions or concerns? No? All right, that brings us to item E, consider board appointments. Council, we have all been receiving the interest from others to join the various boards and committees. Doesn't matter to me if we start on one end or the other, but I will make sure that all present and online know how this work. Do you have any preference on which ones we start with? Anyone?
I just say we start at the top and go down.
Fair enough. All right, the first one that I have on the list is the redevelopment commission. As a reminder, these are one-year terms for all five individuals on that commission. Three of the seats are appointed by the president, two are nominated, and then appointed by the council. We did have some residents, or excuse me, some folks expressed interest that were not eligible for this assignment. I'm not going to go over the names of those, but just be aware that we did go through and look at eligibility on these commissions. Therefore, I'll get things started with the presidential appointments. The first gentleman I will be appointing is Todd Carlisle. The second gentleman I'm appointing is Mr. Eric Moore. And the third I'm appointing is Mr. Kevin Russell. There are still two seats that are available by council nomination and appointment. If anyone would like to nominate.
I nominate Adam Hess.
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed the name.
Adam Hess. A motion has been made and seconded for nomination of Adam Hess. Mr. Sumner?
Councilman Nichols?
Do we want to do them?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. What?
Do we want to do all the nominations first?
I would suggest that we...
There could be issues that we may not, I mean, we may run out of people.
Let's, motion has been made and seconded for him to be on there. However, what I can do is we will still go through in the order of the nominations. That way, the, any voter decision are made on that front. However, holding off on voting on that item, I will ask if there are other nominations to be made, because if there's three nominations for two slots, you may want to change your opinion about someone. That seems good enough. So we have one nomination for Mr. Adam Hess.
I mean, I can tell you who I was going to recommend, just because I sit on this board and I've worked with some of these people. My recommendation was going to be Adam Hess, Mark Pascarella. Both of them have sat on this board, they know the stuff, they have the history, they have the details. Myself, Eric Moore, and Todd Carlisle, because I was going to recommend Kevin for a different board farther down the list.
Okay, so...
So it was going to be?
Who's the fourth one you said? I'm so sorry.
Adam, Mark, myself, Eric, and Todd.
Okay. No need for Eric or Todd, I went ahead and did those. So those are, there are now three names, Adam, Mark, and Cheryl. Are there any other nominations to be made? Then we will just go down one at a time, and be aware that the first two people that get the inventory are the ones we're going to do, so if you don't want someone, don't say yes. So is there any other nominations to be made at this time?
I have no one to nominate, sir.
Mr. Nichols?
I do not.
Mr. Smock?
No.
All right, so we got three names for two positions. I'm going to go ahead and start with Mr. Hess, if that's all right. So in that case, Mr. Sumner?
Councilman Nichols?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock?
Aye.
Councilman Patterson?
Aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Adam Hess will be on RDC. The second name mentioned was Mark Pascarella. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilman Nichols?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hancock?
I guess I'll say nay. I don't have a choice.
I couldn't hear.
Mr. Nichols is a nay, Councilwoman Hancock is?
I guess a nay, unfortunately.
Councilman Patterson?
Based on his finance background, I'd say aye.
Councilman Smock?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye. Carries three two.
Well, then there's no reason for me to sit on that board at this point, then. So you've just kicked me off a board that I was on.
There were five seats, and that's how they are appointed.
You can appoint?
Yes.
Somebody else.
I chose the appointments I felt comfortable with. Thank you.
Wow.
The Board of Zoning Appeals, this is a four-year term. This particular appointment, there are multiple different types of appointment with the Board of Zoning Appeals. This particular one is a presidential appointment. The term on this one will be a four-year term from now until January 1st of 2029. The individual that came off of the BZA was Mark Pascarella. This is a presidential appointment. I will be appointing Mr. Louis Ekins in that place. The next is the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission is made up of four residents and then three employees that work for the town. At this time, the only seats that are available are the three employee seats. They are one-year terms, and they are only for either elected or appointed officials. On this, we have multiple names. These are all council nominations and appointments, so I will now open it to the nominations. We'll do it the same way.
I would like to add my name to this list, since I was not able to be on RDC.
You can certainly nominate yourself. That's perfectly okay.
So I was going to nominate, then I guess, myself, Tovey Thomas, and Chris Gibson. Seems like we are the three that actually live in town.
Chris Gibson, thank you. I would add a nomination, if I could, of Sri. I think having the engineer on the Plan Commission is important.
My thoughts on Sri, though, is that he is part of the TAC team, so he would be handling all of that before it would actually come to Plan Commission. Just as a thought process.
And I do know that all the individuals mentioned so far have all said that they would serve if appointed. Are there any other nominations? Councilman Nichols, are there any nominations? I don't want to leave you out of the conversation.
No, I mean, the only other one I was on was Sri, but Councilwoman Hancock's right that his employee already comes into the TAC. I think we haven't, I hesitate to say this, not having dealt with a lot, but I think we don't use the TAC quite as thoroughly as we probably should, and I think Sri's good on the TAC to do that as we go forward.
Thank you.
And what were the, what were the names that we have for?
The names that we have so far, there are three seats, and we have four names so far. There are Councilwoman Hancock, Councilman Thomas, Mr. Chris Gibson, and Sri.
Understood.
Understood. I don't have any names to add.
Is there any concern about having two council members on Planning Commission?
Those three slots can be elected or employees. So in theory, there could be three electeds.
Honestly, out of all the ones that aren't, you know, fire police, this would be the one to do it because it's specifically made for elected or employed individuals.
Yep.
Excuse me. Any other questions? All right, we'll go down the list the same way. Mr. Sumner, we're going to begin with the nomination of Cheryl Hancock.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Cheryl carries five zero. Next, we'll do Tobe Thomas. Mr. Sumner, if you will.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Carries five zero. Next is Mr. Chris Gibson. Mr. Sumner.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Carries five zero and will not bother with Sri since that's the last one on the list, but we'll still keep Sri very involved, obviously. All right, next, there are two seats for the Police Commission. Both are three-year terms. One is the ex officio seat, which is the council representative on that body. It is a council appointment with nomination process. Since it is a council person, we had two people apply, but one only wanted to apply if the other didn't apply. The other applied, that was Eric. So if anyone would like to formally nominate Eric for that position.
I nominate Eric.
Anyone want to second that?
Second.
All right. Is there any other nominations for the councilmen on Planning Commission?
Police.
Police, I'm sorry, what did I say? Planning? Sorry. Police.
So to confirm, then, this is one of the Democratic seats, non-Republican seats?
This, no, yours is the same seat you just came off of.
Yeah, mine's the ex officio. I was curious as to the other one.
Yes, sir. So the other one that we haven't gotten into is the non-Republican seat. Yes, sir.
And is Mr. Huffman a Democrat or otherwise non-Republican?
Yes, he is. As a matter of fact, he was the one that was serving it pro tem.
I thought so, but I think I just met him at once. But I would nominate then Cameron Huffman for the non-Republican seat.
I would second that. Are there any other nominations for either the non-Republican seat or the ex officio seat? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and start with the ex officio seat since that's where I started. This is for Eric Nichols on the Police Commission. Mr. Sumner, if you would.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Five zero, and then we will go through with Mr. Cameron Huffman for the non-Republican seat. Mr. Sumner.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Carries five zero. The, we have two more left. One is the Boone County Tourism Council. It is a two-year term and it should be someone engaged in convention visitor tourism business involved with promotion of the same and a Boone County resident. I did get the opportunity to sit down and have a conversation with Mr. Douglas Weisheit and he is indeed involved with the tourism industry specifically through the Park County Board of Tourism, is in contact with Allison Gutwain and has been a big part of the Covered Bridge Festival for a long time. So that will be my appointment on the Boone County Tourism Council. Lastly, is, excuse me, I'm sorry, the Economic Development Commission. Previously, this was being held by someone as a pro tem. They do not want to do it again. On the agenda is set a three-year term that was incorrect, or a four-year term that's incorrect, it's a three-year term so that it overlaps with the other offices. This one is, the weird one where it's council nominated and then president appointed. So let's hear nominations for the Economic Development Commission.
Well, there was only one person that had requested, which was.
That was eligible at least.
That was eligible, which was Kevin Russell.
But you can nominate someone who did not come in.
That's who I was going to recommend for the EDC.
Are there any other nominations for EDC? Hearing none, I will appoint Kevin Russell as president appointment for the EDC. Is there, number nine, is there any other business to bring before this body?
Mr. President, I have a question. Did we do the BZA appointment?
Yeah. Yeah.
I must have missed the name.
Yeah, there was, it's a presidential appointment. It was Mr. Louis Ekins over by you.
Got it.
Understood.
And I will send a list of the finals and I will make sure that the website on the town website gets updated with all the expiration dates and how the appointment happened for clarity for next time. Is there any other business to bring for the council? None, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, Mr. Sumner, roll call vote.
Councilman Nichols.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Patterson.
Aye.
Councilman Smock.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.